Number three.
And Mayor, you may want to rephrase that, a decision was made for item number three.
A decision was made for item number three to enter into an employment agreement. Yes, decision was made to enter into an employment agreement, which we discuss the terms of in executive session. So item number three, I need a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the city manager contract between the city of El Dorado and Mr. David Dillner.
Second.
Okay, so moved to second, any further comments? I would say, at this time, I don't have a comment, that we have had several months' worth of search with a professional search firm to find a replacement or a city manager for the city of El Dorado. And I'm pleased, pleased to announce that we will be entering agreement with David Dillner, who come to us from Abilene. He and his young family will be joining us, anticipate him starting March 6th, 6th or 3rd?
6th.
6th, March 6th. So, I am very, very excited to announce that David will be joining us, and we have a press release to hand out as well.
It's been emailed.
It's been emailed?
I will hit send after you make a motion.
All right, it's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Well, I think congratulations to Mr. Dillner, congratulations to this commission and their efforts in doing this. And I'd also like to extend thanks to Scott, kind of a month or so left, but thank you for everything you've done, and Ashlyn, your efforts in this work, so.
And everything you're gonna do.
Beat me to it. Okay, wonderful, and press releases have been emailed out. We're really happy to welcome David and his family to our community. We will plan receptions and other things as the date nears. That's big news, thank you. I will move on to item number four.
Mr. Mayor, I need a vote on that item.
Pardon me?
I need a vote on that item?
Did you say aye? Why did you say aye? Oppose, same sign.
Did we get it, did I miss it?
Yeah.
I got it first and the second, or motion in the second.
Okay.
I said aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Ten, zero.
All right, thank you. Item number four, authorization for determination of dissent.
Yes, Mayor, Commission, this is just, the city needs to file a determination of dissent to clear up title to a piece of property they have an interest in. So, that's what this item is about.
Located at 303 South Emporia?
Correct.
Okay, need a motion?
You ready for a motion? Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the acting city manager to file a determination of dissent on behalf of the city of El Dorado regarding property at 303 South Emporia.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Consent agenda, item number five. Everybody's had a chance to look at minutes and appropriations, any questions or comments associated with that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda is presented to be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any further comment, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item number six, adoption of ordinance for community improvement district. Is there somebody who wish to speak on that?
Mayor, Kim Bell from Gilmore Bell, our bond council is here. Do you have any questions regarding the CID? Go ahead and introduce the project.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you today this afternoon.
Thank you.
The, this is the last formal action that the city commission will take with respect to the formation of the community improvement district for the retail development at 2701 West Central. The developer submitted a petition requesting the formation of the district. Last month, adopted a resolution calling a public hearing on the formation of the district for today. That resolution was published twice in the paper, and notice was provided to all property owners within the district. You're required by statute to conduct a public hearing, and after the public hearing, you may adopt the ordinance that is in front of you. And the ordinance will actually create the district, and it will impose a 1% sales tax within the district for a period of 22 years. And it will begin in July of this year. The revenue will only commence the taxes on the beginning of a calendar quarter, and they need 90 days notice, so the earliest date we could commence it would be in July. We will assist Tavita in giving the ordinance published and recorded a record review about accounting registered deeds. The tax will be a 1% sales tax on all property within the district, all retail sales within the district, and it will continue for 22 years. Those proceeds from the sale, from the sales tax, will be given back to the developer to offset specific development costs that he is going to incur in connection with upgrading the retail district. He anticipates that the entire cost of the project will be something in excess of $2 million. But the amount from the sales tax is projected to be about $588,000, so there'll be about 27% of his costs reimbursed. And we won't reimburse anything like developer fees or commissions or lovely hard costs associated. So if you have any questions, if you have any time to answer them.
If you can hear me, if I read this correctly, we have a 20,000 square foot existing building.
Right.
And he's going to add on to that another 15,000 and some square feet.
He's gonna construct a 5,000 square foot space for Hibbert Sports and relocate them, and then construct a new 1,200 square foot space for relocation of another tenant, and then construct another 9,000 square feet, so he's gonna substantially enlarge the district, or enlarge the retail area.
Doubling the size on that little lot? Do we have what it looks like with all the additional?
It, it's the envelope.
Building tenant space within the existing.
Within the existing space, we're not building new buildings, we're building, we're doing, we're refinishing the tenant space within the building, and then they're building additional new, new space.
The envelope itself is staying the same, they're remodeling the interior. I take, they are not adding on to the building.
So they're changing the existing space to be 9,000?
Yeah, so, so one of the buildings will now be nine, one of the interior spots for lease will be 9,000.
Okay, okay.
So this, this probably ought to say the renovation, and not expansion. I've gotta strike the word expansion?
Where do I have the word expansion?
This development includes a renovation and expansion of approximately 20,000 square feet of shopping zone.
Yeah, renovation of an existing 20,000 square feet.
So we should strike expansion?
Yeah, and that's, and that's just in the background, so your motion will cover that, and the development agreements in place speaks to the improvement.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Thank you. Next action on this item would be to hold a public hearing. At this time, I would open the, open the meeting for a public hearing for the community improvement district. Anybody wish to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close a public hearing, move on to suggested motion.
Number, please.
G 1237.
I'm ready.
I move to approve ordinance number G 1237, an ordinance authorizing the creation of the Guffy Zomwalt Properties Community Improvement District in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, the reimbursement of certain economic development project costs incurred within said district, the imposition of a community improvement district sales tax to be collected within said district, and the execution of a development agreement related to said district.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comments? All right, pro call.
Mayor Beans?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badger?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And, welcome to the Guffy Zomwalt Properties, looking forward to them getting started on their project. Item number seven is the paving of Oak Street. I think we've had some, this was a topic that came up a little over a year ago, went through some public hearing, or not public hearing, went through a process of, of petition, Scott, can you speak?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Commission, this item is, this is a project you all authorized or initiated, this project. At this point, staff and legal counsel are advising you that you repeal the resolution that created this project. And in doing so, then I'll send out notifications to those property owners within the improvement district, letting them know as such, and that if there is any interest in the improvement of the roadway, to contact my office, that we can talk them through the process of petitioning for the road. And then, if, if there's a certain number there, then you all as a commission can consider again if you want to initiate and start the process.
Sounds good, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna vote on this because my manufacturing plant sits in this district.
Okay. Scott, can you expand a little bit on why to repeal it?
The repeal, it, there was a protest filed with, with the project, after you guys initiated the project, there was a protest filed. Those property owners within the improvement district had 20 days to present to you all a sufficient petition. And upon reviewing that, we think those numbers are there. So, we need to go ahead and start this process.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? It's a resolution number?
2838.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number 2838, a resolution repealing resolution number 2817 determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements for the city of El Dorado, Kansas, street improvements, Oak Street, Project 488.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four, yea, and one abstention. Next on our agenda is new business. What do you have, any new business to bring forward to the commission?
I just have one real quick question, kinda random. I had a phone call, someone asking me about if we had a ordinance or something in place with people illegally feeding stray cats.
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if I recall it correctly, maybe someone chimed in that knows a little better, but, but it has to be your animal, you have to.
Okay.
You can, you're only allowed to feed your animal.
That's a real fun?
Yeah.
Okay. If you could just email me what it is specifically, I'll pass that off. And I think that's where I have questions, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we had a meeting with the El Dorado Housing Committee. We learned that El Dorado has 100, or 719 deteriorated housing units, and 176 are dilapidated housing units, for a total of 895. Five of these homes have been orange-tagged by the city, and seven are slated to be, or have been demolished. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move $13,000 from the Economic Development Fund to the $16,000 City Demolition Fund, for a total of $29,000 in 2017, so the city manager can continue to buy and demolish blight and abandoned homes in El Dorado, and resell these lots for either, or for future development.
I'll second that motion.
Can I make one suggestion?
Okay.
Maybe not tie to economic development funds, and see if we can find those funds. Not knowing the fund balance off the top of my head, we don't want to strap that, that fund too much. So if there is a consensus amongst you all, I would just say funds from the general fund of the city of El Dorado, or something of that nature.
So I have to say?
Hell yeah, you gotta read the whole thing again.
Well, if you could just amend and say, instead of economic development, general fund of the city.
How much was it again?
Is that good?
13,000.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, wanna move, I'll make a motion to move 13,000 from the general fund to 16,000 of the city demolition fund, for $29,000 in 2017, so the city manager can continue to buy and demolish blight and abandoned homes in El Dorado, and resell these lots for future development.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Did I get that down, so, of the 16,000 existing I, we have in that demo, demo fund today? You want to add an additional 16,000?
13.
Additional 13,000?
13. For a total of 29,000.
29.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any time for discussion?
Do we have it?
Yeah, I guess I'd.
We're not gonna spend it if we don't have it, so.
We have been preparing for the demolitions, so Scott and I have been putting money back over the years from the demolition pot, Fund 0127, into its own little, we made a new fund and everything for it, so we have a pot of money for just this, so I think you're peppers.
And, and these are, these are properties we own now?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know, I guess.
No, this would be for, we utilize that fund for properties that are dilapidated or beyond repair, and there's an issue, and then the city will move in and purchase that property, and then demolish it, and make the lot reavailable, available, redeveloped.
So these funds that we've got a motion on are just for the demolish, demolition of those properties, not the acquisition?
And acquisition.
And acquisition.
And acquisition.
I, I can tell you, you know, last year, we went above that, but you all heard about those projects along the way, the special request. I think you, this motion, it would be up, up to that amount, I mean, we're gonna manage that, and see if we have the resources or the funds available to be able to.
So what we're really doing here is maybe amending a budget, moving money from, adding to a line item in our budget, as opposed to just adding this to our budget discussion coming up and anticipating it next year? You know, it's, am I?
That's what I'm curious about.
We're basically managing the budget as well.
Well, in the way I heard Commissioner Lewis's motion is, is you would give the city authority to go up to $29,000 this year for property acquisition, building demolition.
Versus the 16.
Versus the 16 that we, that was in the budget.
Yes.
We would just have to find those funds elsewhere, we wouldn't increase the overall budget.
We're just acknowledging here a change in, in allocation. Okay. And all that's still contingent on availability of funds?
They have the money.
Okay, now, as we, as we talk about this too, is this, is this a number that we need to be carrying forward in future budgets?
I think we'll talk about that at budget time, and you'll see the overall needs of all the apartments, and that's, that's one that, we definitely know there's a need out there, and we'll talk about that in its future funding level, and, and see where, if we're able to do it.
Are we typically getting these properties in the tax auction, or are we getting them by negotiating with the landowner? How are we typically acquiring these properties?
Typically negotiating with the land, landowner. Typically, they're unwanted properties even from the landowner, they're one that get their, walk away, they don't want to worry about having to pay for the demolition. We're able to step in with this program.
Most of those we're talking about are already orange-tagged?
Yeah, they could be, yeah. An orange tag just means something needs to be addressed with this property. There's issues, you need a, it's, it's setting a hearing with the building official to come in and discuss the problems that he sees with the property, and how the owner plans on addressing those issues. The orange tag doesn't necessarily mean it's, it's slight, slated for demolition.
So there's no, there's nothing immediate or pending right now that requires, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, like, you know, where it comes from, I guess, just why it's not on the agenda, or is there something?
We just discussed it, and it was something that, that was brought up, and I wanted to move it forward to have.
I just didn't know if there was, I haven't heard anything of it until right now, that's all.
There is a need, and we'll find a way to use it, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's a need.
Do we spend, when we acquire properties, and I appreciate, and can, can truly appreciate the blighted houses that are in a neighborhood, as the city moves forward on a program like this, are we just, is there any kind of targeted area? Is there any kind of, or is it just whatever's available, and if it's bad, we're willing to have a discussion and acquire it? So we could end up with lots scattered around the city?
The, the original intent when this fund was created, in the, what we really started using those funds for were properties within flood plains, really targeting those, and that helps with our FEMA sides risk to communities, and that's how they base flood insurance rates, and that helps with our, with that rating with FEMA, so you saw a lot of activity in flood plains, and, and we've since reached out in, in the core of the community, and have acquired some homes.
How many has the city tore down already, two?
Oh, more than that, this year. I, I'd like, let me get you a report this week, and email you that, that out. And I'll show you a map, we have a map of the properties we've acquired, and I'll show you on that.
Okay. And then when we end up with these lots, I don't belabor this too much more, we end up with these lots that are scattered around town, they're small lots, usually if they're in the older part of town, they're 50-foot wide by, so to build something new on them is, is a challenge.
It, it'll take variances in the process. Only two come to mind that are in the core of town, and one of you took action on earlier this evening, that 303 South Emporia. That was a property where you acquired for a dollar.
Okay.
That's gonna have the potential of being a really nice project.
Right, that one in particular's got an adjacent property owner that has half the block, and I mean, it's, it's got some, some, I'm mostly concerned about those ones that are in the middle of the block.
No way to go.
Well, that's a decision of the commission, if, if it's in the best interest of the neighborhood to split that lot between the two adjacent property owners, to have them make improvements, or, a lot of these smaller lots can be built on. Subdivision regs allow older, platted areas to have a little less stringent setback requirements.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'd welcome that info, please.
All right, we have motions moved in second, any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, going back to what I'm talking about, El Dorado Inc. celebrated 30 years during its annual meeting on Thursday afternoon. In 2016 was the year of the strong existing business growth and housing initiatives. The group elected new board members, President Lonny Krier, Vice President Gene Kendall, Treasurer Vic Guyer, and Secretary Keleen Adams. And the last thing I have is the Star Street Tri- or Three Plugs Open House, which is tomorrow, between 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., at 303 North Star. And they're wanting us all to attend, if we can make it.
Yeah, everybody's welcome.
11 to what?
11 to 1. Okay.
They're serving lunch.
They are. That is an MIH grant project, we will have KHRC from Topeka down to be part of that open house as well. Yes. Okay. Anybody else, new business, from the commission?
I can't talk anyway.
I'm sorry.
All right, I guess the only I would add is library board meeting, attended that last week, and friends of the library have their book sale coming up. Main Street Met a few weeks ago, I attended that, they're getting work scheduled kicked off for the 2017 year, and I have not, Rebus meets in the upcoming week, so, I'll do that. I did, I was also able to attend the municipal day, municipal day at the Kansas Legislature, which, chance to learn a little bit about what's coming up, and some of the political will, and discussion going on about some of the bills that affect us as a city. I don't think, I think the mill, a great discussion was the Mill Levy Cap, and the logistics of that, and if they're still gonna be working with it, but they just don't see, don't necessarily see the repeal of that coming. The one that I think has got everybody's attention right now would be the concealed carry, which, which I think the law permits concealed carry on the campuses and city of all public buildings, and public employees carrying, public employees also be able to conceal and carry on the job. That's being in committee right now, and being talked about. That certainly affects, affects the city directly, affects all of our public entities, but we're one of them. I don't know whether there's been any discussion, policy discussion at the city, we haven't had that discussion as a commission yet.
Yeah, we, we do have a policy about concealed carry, and carrying firearms, and weapons in general, as a city employee. Last July, that became active, the municipalities couldn't restrict that. So our policy basically is, it's to be on that person at all times, not to be left in city vehicles, and that's really the gist of it.
So, pay attention to that coming up, there's more, more discussion on that. It's really all I, it's really all I have, anybody else have any?
Well, I had a question on this moderate income housing grant, on this duplex, and I've had some people ask a lot of questions about it. What does that mean, four or family?
A four. Family of four would be a.
What would be their income they would have to have in order to qualify for it?
And Linda, on Linda left, but I'm pretty sure it's up to 120% of what the median income?
150% of the median income.
Okay.
And the median income gets adjusted yearly.
And they're not for sale, they're for rent?
The one, the duplex? I don't know about the duplex. I don't know about the duplex.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the, this on second star.
Oh, they're for rent, yeah.
For rent.
But in general, that project isn't unique. But in general, they, they could be properties in the future. If we, you know, we did receive another MI, MIH grant for the next year, there's no reason those properties couldn't be for sale in ownership.
Right.
Okay.
It depends on the developer, how they want to use it.
I would just ask about a couple of people, and I really didn't know how to answer. I know it was based on income for a family of four.
It's based, not, not necessarily a family of four, it's based on in, income. It's moderate, moderate income, could be a single person, provided they still meet, um, meet the income restrictions, which, which are, which is 150% of the median income. But depending on the family's size, that, that ceiling creeps up, depending on, it's, uh, it could, like I said, it could be a single person that can rent and qualify to be in, to, to, to live in these, these, for these grant.
Yeah.
Facilities.
Okay. And, and there's a, there's a period that the developers are required to ma, maintain that, um, someone of moderate income levels is living there. And the same would be true if a developer sold that property. There would be a deed restriction with the city's interest shown on there, if it was ever sold to a higher-income person. Kind of a call back.
Thank you.
Any other new business? City managers report.
Yes, it, it, at 4 o'clock today, you mentioned that, and that was pretty nice.
That's nice.
Or I thought maybe you didn't. 4 o'clock today, Grizzly, Brother Grizzly Athletics presented a, a check to Prairie Trails for $1,000 in support and gratitude for the hosting of the National Juco Cross Country Meet. Very appreciative of that, and I think we're going to find a place to put those funds, some unique thing out there in need that Prairie Trails has. And, and on top of that, all of the city's expenses were covered, um, from in, income as well on that tournament.
Good.
We got news from KDOT last week, um, pretty exciting news, at least for me, and, and our city as a whole, that they are accepting projects, um, for fiscal year 2019, so that would be July 2018. So we'll see, uh, funds coming back to our community for Mill and Overlay, for project major maintenance on Central Main, um, any widening realignment work. So we're glad to see that program come back. And in fact, the funding levels are higher than they were previously. Previously, we were at a maximum of $220,000 from the state, and now they've bumped that to $300,000. So that's good news. Work's still progressing on the baseball fields behind McDonald Stadium, Central Park, the Boys Diamonds. Should see the light poles going up here shortly on the realignment project over there. And we've got two paving projects out to bid. One of them's the paving of Griffith and Locust here. The bid opening on that will be March 1st, along with Mill and Overlay work on Central from Jones to Summit. That's all I have.
Any update on the Disc Golf?
Disc Golf, we got, we got another revised alignment. We've got, um, the designer, of course, wants to be out there while we stake it out, kind of get his eye. So, um, our cruiser is going to go out there and do some flagging work tomorrow, where the tee box and basket locations are. We've got, um, a quote from, uh, from a local vendor to do some maintenance work on the bridges, and add some railing to them, and some new decking, some safety upgrades. We went out to bid for the concrete work on the tee pads. The low bid was a local vendor on that as well. So, um, they are, once we get the alignment and, and all the positions nailed down, then we'll go ahead and release those guys to get out there and start pouring some concrete for the tee pads.
Good. Thank you. Well, I think that's, we get to the end of our agenda. Nothing further than I obtain a motion for adjournment.
I move adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, we are adjourned.